Okay, it is Thursday, March 17, 2022, 6:00 PM, and this is the Plating Committee meeting.
Okay, I'll call Plating to order at 6 o'clock. Members present, Kevin Myers, Dan Wireball, Teri Spiegel, and myself, Chair. Approval of amended minutes from February 17th, regular Plating Committee meeting? You have them in front of you? Are there any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Seeing what I asked, being corrected, being corrected, I have a motion to approve.
Okay.
I'll send them there.
First and second. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. All right, then, now we have the minutes from March 3. On the backside, okay? I have those in front of you. Anybody have any questions? If not, can entertain a motion?
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
I'll amend this.
Oh.
Oh, I'll second that.
Okay.
Wait, who is the first, I'm sorry? Okay.
Dan. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed unanimously. All right. Public participation for Plating.
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. On March 4, 2022, I sent an email to council members and others concerning the March 1, 2022, public hearing meeting. My email said forth that at the March 3, 2022, Plating Committee meeting, Myers stated that the public hearing had been canceled because the Telegraph Forum did not publish the hearing notice. Myers further stated that there had been, quote, "three screw-ups on the public hearing matter." While that statement is true, the Telegraph Forum is not at fault in any of the screw-ups as Myers alluded to. In my searching the Telegraph Forum archives, I found a copy of the public hearing notice, which had in fact been published in the TF on January 21, 2022, and attached it to my email. I received an email reply from Myers stating that he, quote, "was simply going on information provided to him by the council clerk who canceled the hearing because she stated it was not published." My concern is that these screw-ups made it necessary to run the legal notice three additional times. Running the legal notice three additional times has resulted in three additional advertising fees. These additional advertising fees, which have decreased the city revenue, could have been avoided. Finally, Myers stated in his email, excuse me, in his email response, that he would, quote, gladly walk back his statement publicly that the newspaper did not publish. I didn't know if you'd like to do that at this time, Kevin.
I appreciate that opportunity, yes, I do. I want to make sure that I was only going off the information I was provided, that I meant no ill towards the Telegraph Forum, I was simply going off what I had provided, so I do walk that statement back.
I think we just need to be more careful and double-check these things, because, I mean, I just went right to the archives, searched it, bang. So.
I don't think we have access to that, do we?
May I respond to that? Yeah. So I looked up, I figured out, once Vicki had emailed me, and said, there's a way to look up the legal notices, I did find it, I did contact the newspaper prior to canceling that, and I, nobody, like, I talked to someone, and they just said, what information do you have? And I told them the date we sent it, and I tried calling, and I was sent to somebody not in this region, and they, well, they said, well, this is the number, you need to call to check it, and they sent me to Des Moines. So I attempted to find this through them, because I did not know you could search the legal notice, and I didn't even know where to start, because I didn't know what day they published it. So then I finally did what you said, or I researched it, because you said you could do it that way. I did find it, it was my error, but it's not, because we didn't try to stop it. I contacted them through email multiple times, I called them, I tried to get it figured out prior, but it is my error, I just, I ended up finding the legal notices they do for the billing for the legal notices are not the same as the legal notices they do for media posting. So it was just randomly typed in an email somewhere, this is the balance.
Might I suggest, do you, I know in the past, the council clerk was the one who would send the legal notices. No, no, I did that when I was the legal crook in the law director's office. Well, not, not public hearing notices, I didn't have anything to do with those, I just had to do with legal notices, advertising for bids, what have you. So who sent the public hearing notice to the Telegraph Forum?
I did.
Okay. So that public hearing notice would have had in it a date for it?
That's what, this was the first legal notice I've, this is the first thing I've ever sent to the paper. So when she replied, the way that they do, like I said with the media notices, they'll send you an invoice in that email. With this, she just typed out, this is the balance, and she said, is it, is it okay to post it? And I said, well, Kevin and Brian worked it up, and they said it's fine, so yes. So it's just, the legal notice billing is not the same as, like, a regular billing, so that's what threw me off.
So the Telegraph Forum did not tell you what day, or you did not request what day you wanted that posted?
I honestly would have to believe not.
Because I know when I would do legal notices, again, for advertising for bids, I always set forth what dates I wanted that posted.
And they may have, they probably did, but I, it was my first post, I didn't even think to look for that, because in the media, like, media invoices, they will have everything right there, so I was waiting for that to come. I didn't under, I didn't know that was legal notices, they actually sent an affidavit and everything to the building. So that was an error, I, I just think it was a very not good situation all around, but it wasn't for lack of me trying to get it figured out, I just did not know that things were different.
The affidavit for this legal notice was sent to Muskingham County for some reason. Just saying. I don't know how it got there, but it ended up at Muskingham County.
Well, I know along with my searching the archives, I also try to make it a point to look at the legal notices in the Telegraph Forum. So attached to my email was the actual legal notice that was in the TF. Now, when you go to searching the archives, if it's after so many days, you won't get that nice little legal notice, but you'll get a printout that shows that, the legal notice, was printed on this day, and they'll give you a, well, they'll show you what the notice said, but it's not the typical, nice-looking.
Yeah, once you've pointed that out, there is a way to look for it, I did find it, so I really, I greatly appreciate that now, because moving forward, now I know, obviously, she, the last one I requested, like, which she already did, I was like, can you just tell me them out again, and tell me the date it's going to be posted? So moving forward, I know to look for those.
We might want to think if that happens again, remember the meeting that we had with the people on the alley, and they're like, it wasn't in the paper, it wasn't in the paper, and Jerry Goble, there you are, Jerry, you text and said, yes, here it was. I mean, if you're having that difficulty with the Telegraph Forum, as you indicated you did, and I may be overstepping my bounds, but Jerry, could they contact you and say, hey, can you check this?
I can't help you get something in, but I'm happy to go back through our meditations and tracks.
Right, that's what I'm asking.
Well, that's the only issue I have, that I noticed prior to me working here, that was posted before I even started. So, but now I know what to look for, I think that's the most important thing, is not, I didn't know what to look for, because it was my first legal notice, it was actually, I don't, I just remembered, Kevin told me how to send it.
Well, just for some clarity, when she asked me about it, the first question I said was, did you get the affidavit? And that's the first I heard that I should ask.
Because I know when you were serving as the interim council clerk, you would have had two public hearings, because that was the one that you sent, and then they had the meeting, and there was no forum, and you didn't have the meeting, and...
Yep. But no, that was the first question I asked Megan, was, did you get an affidavit? No, she hadn't had one, so.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, Vicki.
Okay.
Jessie Burner, 118 West Southern Avenue, beautiful Bussaras, Ohio. Esteemed council members, concerned citizens, Happy St. Patrick's Day, good evening. Thanks for letting me talk tonight. I have a short.
This is the Plating Committee?
This is Plating, you want to talk to Plating.
Oh.
I was just going to say, it's all right. We'll listen to you, but you need to dress us up.
Wrong committee.
Darn.
It's okay, say good.
Don't polish that, Jerry.
Okay.
I know.
Okay, does the committee have anything else? If not, I will adjourn at 6:10 PM.
It is Thursday, March 17, 2022, 6:11 PM, and this is the Health and Safety Committee meeting.
I'll call Health and Safety order at 6:11 PM. Members present, Dan Wireball, Steve Young, Mark McKeever, and myself, Chair. You have before you the amended minutes from February 17, regular Health and Safety Committee meeting, which do have the correction of the audio link posted up at the header. I will entertain a motion to approve these amended minutes. So move.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McKeever, second by Mr. Young, any other discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries. The backside of that, you have your minutes from the regular Health and Safety Committee meeting, Thursday, March 3, 2022. I'll entertain a motion to approve said minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wireball, second by Mr. McKeever. If there's no further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same, motion carries. Any public participation for Health and Safety?
Vicki DeShawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bussaras. The purpose for my discussing what I'm going to discuss during this meeting is because it pertains to all committee meetings, and so I figured, okay, let's discuss it now, so everyone has an understanding of the procedure to be followed in case something arises tonight as what occurred at Tuesday night's council meeting. I preface my talk with the statements that, first, I have no problem with Bussaras Codified Ordinance, Section 111, 111.21, entitled Council Rules for Security, and I understand their importance. However, I do have a problem when the procedure is not properly carried out. At the March 15, 2022, council meeting, City resident Carolyn Shireman was removed from the meeting at the request of President Pro Tem Dan Wireball. On March 16, 2022, I sent an email to council members and others with a copy of Section 111.21. The procedure that is outlined in that section is as follows. This is the procedure to be followed to remove someone from council chambers. First, there is to be a notice given, and I'm reading directly from that section. The council president will notify any speaker to end their time at the podium or to cease any disruptive activity. Mr. Wireball didn't either.
Yes, sir.
Excuse me, I will not interrupt you in your talking, so please do not interrupt me. What you stated was, Carolyn, Carolyn, thank you. You then repeated again, Carolyn, and then you said, I'm running this meeting, please sit down. You then are to give a first warning. That first warning says, if any subject fails to relinquish the podium or cease the disruption, the council president will inform the subjects that they will be removed from city property by order of the sergeant-at-arms. Mr. Wireball did not issue this first warning, but stated to Bussaras Police Lieutenant John Dorsey, could you remove her, please? Third, you then give a second warning. If the subject fails to comply following the first warning, the council president will then revoke the subject's right to remain in the meeting room and inform the person that they will be subject to arrest for trespassing if they do not immediately and peaceably leave the room. The section goes on to say, the content of the warning shall be, this is what's to be said, I inform you that your actions are inconsistent with the orderly function of this meeting and fail to comply with the lawful order from the chair. I am instructing the sergeant-at-arms to have you removed from the meeting site, and, if deemed necessary by the sergeant-at-arms, to remove you from the building. I received today the following email response from councilperson Wireball. He states, I believe the second sentence spells it out clearly. Quote, "The sergeant-at-arms will carry out all orders given by the council president or presiding member for the purpose of maintaining order at city council/committee meetings." He went on to say, "In my opinion, the speaker's behavior was beyond reprehensible and will not be tolerated by this council." Secondly, the speaker's constant interruptions gave little to no opportunity for repeated warnings. In today's world, we can either be part of the problem or part of the solution. Thank you for your support of Bussaras City Council, Dan Wireball. Now, I personally feel that Mr. Wireball's statement, that the speaker's constant interruptions gave little to no opportunity for repeated warnings, I take that as an excuse for his not properly carrying out the established procedure. It's right there, 1234. Nowhere does it say, 123, this is what you're to do, but if the person is disruptive and you just can't say what you want to say, that's okay. That's not what it says, and I'm sorry, but, again, I have no problem with the council security rules. But just do them properly, that's, is that so hard? Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. Any other? Yes, there is.
Kurt Fankhauser, 616 Prospect Street. I would like it noted in the minutes that Dan Wireball just walked out of this meeting, and he should be noted unexcused. While Vicki was talking, he couldn't handle her speaking the truth, so he, he just walks out of here. He is an elected official, he does not get to decide when he's going to be absent or not, and be unexcused or not. Also, following up with Vicki, when I was council president, there was a page always sitting up there on that desk that had the exact procedures to remove somebody from the meeting. I never had to use it once. Nobody was ever removed from any meeting I was in. Dan did not follow the statute that Bussaras has passed to remove somebody from the meeting, and I am alleging that he has committed, therefore, he has committed misfeasance or malfeasance in office. And there is a procedure in Ohio Revised Code 733.72 for Dan Wireball to be removed from public office. So you can look that up. It takes five elected or registered voters to file this complaint with the courts, and I welcome any of you on council to join in that potential filing, because I have a feeling there's going to be a filing. Thank you.
Thank you, Kurt. Any other public participation for Health and Safety? Hearing none, I will adjourn Health and Safety at 6:19 PM.
It's also, so you can't change taxes for classes of people, so what he wants to do is not legal nor appropriate. I mean, it's an across-the-board tax, you can't set out different subsets of citizens. I understand what he's trying to do, but can't do it.
Okay. Well, we'll discuss it when he brings it up. All right. Is there anything else from Economic Development that you want to discuss, Steve, Aaron? Not at the moment, okay? Public participation? Being none, I will adjourn Economic Development at 6:24 PM.
Okay, it is March 17, 2022, 6:25 PM, and this is the Service Committee meeting.
Thank you, I'd like to call the Service Committee meeting to order. Members Steve Young, Aaron Scherrick, and myself, Chair, are present. We will approve the amended minutes from the February 17 meeting. 6:25. And we got the audio, where's on, on audio at the top of the minutes, so I need approval of it.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Got a motion by Aaron.
Second.
Second by Steve. No more discussion on it, I'll vote usual sign.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion. Okay, we got the minutes from the March 3 meeting. I will entertain a motion to accept those as written.
So moved.
By Aaron, need a second?
Second.
Need more discussion, if not, vote?
Aye.
Aye, vote aye, it passes. Okay, we need public participation, anybody? Seeing none, we go to the OPWC grants. I guess we are waiting on McKeever and Associates to get their info to the service director on that, so there's really no report on that until we get that information, so seeing that, we have nothing else, any more public participation?
Did you, I didn't hear, did you call to order, like, at what time?
6:25.
Okay, sorry, I'm sorry, thank you.
We're done? Then I'm going to adjourn the meeting at 6:27, right?
Yep.
Good enough.
Okay, it is March 17, 2022, 6:28 PM, and this is the Finance Committee meeting.
Okay, I will call Finance to order at 6:28 PM. We have before you the approval of the minutes for May 24, 2021, for this special finance meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay. There's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Okay, the approval of the amended minutes for Thursday, February 17, 2022, for Finance.
Do we approve as amended?
Sorry, okay. All those, if there's no discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. And the March 3 Finance Committee meeting minutes.
Move your group.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. There's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passed. Public participation?
Yes, sir. Hey, y'all. Thanks for letting me come here and talk to you again.
No, you're not doing that.
No, we'll just move that up. Don't do that tonight. Go right ahead.
Okay. Thank you. I just have a brief statement to reinforce what I said a couple weeks ago, and I'll read it. The Bucyrus Area Chamber of Commerce and the Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau are proposing that our two entities be joined so that we might better serve our beautiful community, city, and county. There will be one chamber governing board with a subcommittee that will represent tourism. The bed tax money will be used to pay or partially pay the salary of an employee. This employee would have a focus on tourism and other chamber-related duties. The chamber would also bring back the Best Worst Bike Ride, which was an annual event that took place during the Bratwurst Festival. We are making this proposal with the understanding that it will be a contract that will be automatically renewed every two years. This collaboration is what we would like for our community, and we firmly believe that it will be a success. The chamber pledges to use every bed tax dollar to its fullest extent for the promotion of our beautiful community, city, and county. Thanks for your consideration. Happy St. Patrick's Day.
I have some questions, but are you speaking first?
Sure. Would you like the paper?
I would.
Okay.
Yeah.
You can have it.
But I will still have some questions for you.
Okay. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Rhonda Roland, 4571 Home Center Road, Bucyrus, Ohio. Just real brief, I represent the tourism side of this potential merger, and I guess 10 years ago, when I joined that board, I asked the question, "Why are we separated from the chamber?" And that was one of my first questions. I won't go into detail exactly what I was told because it may sound unkind and that's not what we want, but I do have a statement for you. After years of division, we, meaning the tourism board and the chamber led by Jessie, have disasserted that the path forward is always best traveled together. So, thank you.
May I ask some questions, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
What type of a timeline do you see...let me back up and reiterate that you guys converged together without our approval. What we're being asked to approve is entering into a contract to provide 50% of the bed tax money to an entity that is serving in the tourism realm. So you can do whatever you want without our approval. I want to make sure everybody understands that we're not being asked to approve you guys doing something together. We're being asked to approve the contract for finances. So what kind of a timeline do you have to put your plan into full fruition? If we say, "Hey, we want to do this," what are we looking at?
Would you like me to approach the podium?
Please. Yeah, please.
There seems to be only one conversation in here, so I didn't know. I project pretty well sometimes. Thank you for your question, Councilman Myers. As I alluded to in my last time I was here, we've already been doing it. So I feel that I've been kind of doing the work for free for a long, long time because we do get a lot of calls. So as far as a timeline to change this, I feel like we're already doing the work, and going forward, this bed tax dollars would be enough to hopefully hire a part-time employee. Since that we've...since we've already been doing the work, I feel that we could take our time in selecting that part-time employee because it's not going to be an easy position to hire for. We already operate on a shoestring, and as most of us know that have looked, the bed tax dollars are not a huge amount of money. We're looking at somewhere between $15,000 and $25,000 a year, which is not a huge salary for someone. So it's going to take a special person to come on to do the amount of work required. And quite frankly, if it's not given to us and we just blend on our own anyhow, I won't have the gumption and the energy to continue to expand.
Sure.
And so...does that kind of answer your question?
That does. I've got a few more. Your entities, and I don't remember which is which, one is a 5-1(c)(3), and that one would be the Tourism Bureau.
Correct.
And then the chamber is a (c)(6).
Correct. Yes.
So do you intend on leaving those two entities, they're legal entities, separate as they currently are?
Absolutely.
Okay. So the contract then would be with the chamber or with the Tourism Bureau, with the chamber as the parent organization?
Yes.
And that may be a question for you, I believe. Are we required to contract with the actual (c)(3) or can we contract with the (c)(6)?
I don't know.
Okay. So we need to solve that question.
But we would keep the separate distinctions and expect the bed tax dollars to go to the (c)(3).
So your desire is to have the money to go be written, the check be written to the Tourism Bureau? So I think that solves that problem. Two separate boards of directors or will you utilize the same board under both?
A subcommittee. We'll have a subcommittee that will follow our regular meetings.
Okay.
So some members, Rhonda, I believe, has expressed interest, and a few other folks that would be interested in being on that tourism subcommittee. So we would just hold those meetings monthly 10 times a year.
In the past, with the Tourism Bureau, not so much the chamber, but with the Tourism Bureau, there was always a member of council was put on that. Would you be open to having a member of council? And if so, my suggestion would be I'd like to see it be the Economic Development Chair. If he's not here tonight, so we'll throw him under the bus and sign him up or something.
I think he mentioned...he mentioned something last time.
Yeah, I had that conversation. I would like to see that be a permanent spot put onto that board, just with the rest of the stuff that we do as a council. I think that will maintain a good working relationship between us and you.
I might get a free tattoo out of it.
My last question. My last...yeah, I don't think that's the...
That's between you and him.
It's a donation.
You threw me now. My last question was on the tip of my tongue.
I do apologize.
You did.
Excuse me. I have a question.
Go right ahead.
Are we still collecting that tax now?
So the bed tax is being collected. The city receives it. Joyce is holding it because the contract with the Tourism Bureau expired January 1st.
Okay.
So it is paid quarterly.
Okay.
So basically, once we make a decision, it's going to pick up without any lapse.
Okay.
My next question to you, or I don't remember what it was. The previous contracts, I don't know what all the lengths were, but do you have an idea in mind of the length of contract that you would be seeking?
I'm fine with renewal biannually if that works for everyone or every other year.
Biannually in conjunction with newly seeded council committees, cheers, I think is a good idea. So I do like that as well. So I'm just curious if you were on the same page. That's all the questions I have.
Aaron.
I was just trying to...since Jessie's going to answer questions. Okay, you had said automatic renewal biannually?
With review. I mean, you're not going to get it whenever you want.
It would have to be reviewed.
You missed that whole part of what she said. That was all part of her whole thing. Certain things. Anyway, the question is, is could we request as part of this, if it's not too much of a...like we did for the other group out of Galleon, where you could give us something showing where the money's going, how we're doing?
I would have to hire somebody first for the salary piece of it. I'm not sure what you would want to see, like phone bills, internet bills, office bills.
Just something showing like, hey, we did these things this year, or we got this many more people with such and such that happened, you know?
I'm not sure how to show those metrics.
Things you kind of see anyway, like we're bringing back the Brody bike and we had 150 people sign up for it, you know?
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to give like registration lists.
Because, I don't know, people like to see what they're doing for their money.
Mm-hmm. So...
I would be content with an annual visitor person give us a verbal report.
Yeah, I'd love that.
Once a year. I think that...I think...
Potluck.
Sure, Jessie. Great idea.
I can say, you know, just off the top of my head, last year on Memorial Day, we had right around 400 people attend the cemetery walk. So that was pretty cool.
Okay, so I'm going to ask for legislation and ask you to do a contract.
And I know because I ran out of brochures and that's how many we printed.
That's good. That's good. All right.
Any other questions?
I would...Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to request legislation that authorizes entering into said contract with the Bucyrus Tourism and Visitors Bureau retroactive to January 1 of this year that would expire December 31 of next year, so that two-year period coinciding with the council terms. I'd also like to request in with that legislation being prepared that the Law Director work up a contract that stipulates the things that we've just discussed, like asking for an annual report and things such as that. I am requesting it retroactive to January 1, and I am not requesting it as an emergency. I'd like that as regular legislation, please.
Okay.
I'll say it.
All right. If there's no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed.
Mucho excelente.
Thanks for taking that.
Gracias. Absolutely. Talk to you all later.
Okay.
We'll see you next month.
Okay. Any public participation?
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, guys. It went out of my head because I really wasn't sure what was going on. I was like, is this happening right now? And I think it just did. But I would just like to address the podium and anyone listening on Facebook one more time, just to say that we do operate on a shoestring, and I know that there's a lot of intelligent, passionate people out there that love this community as much as we do. And so if anyone would be interested in helping host tours or provide knowledge or come and act at the cemetery walks or provide, you know, your skills in any way, please get ahold of the Chamber of Commerce, 419-562-4811, or email me, jessie@bucyrusohio.com. Thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Now, for other public participation.
Vicki Deshawn, 1108 Hillcrest Drive, Bucyrus, Ohio. At the March 3, 2022 Finance Committee Meeting, Chairperson Wireball stated that the new council rules of procedure, which previously allowed a five-minute time limit for speakers to address committees, now only allows speakers three minutes to talk. Mr. Wireball misspoke. There is no time limit for speakers to address committees. The three-minute time limit is when speakers address council. I remind everyone, and I was going to direct this to Mr. Wireball, but he chose to walk out. He was an active, very active participant in the meetings concerning the revision of the council rules of procedure. And more importantly, he was very active during the discussion on reducing the speaker time limits from five minutes to three minutes. He was adamantly opposed to the five minutes. I direct your attention to the council rules of procedure. A, Citizen Participation #8, which states the following. For committee meetings, each committee will have a period of public input. Each speaker not already on the agenda shall speak to a committee on one subject at a time. Committee Chair has the discretion to limit public input. That last sentence was put in at the request of Councilperson McKeever. His reasoning for that, and correct me if I am misspeaking, but your concern was that sometimes an individual will get up and speak and just keep repeating and repeating something that they've stated. And by putting this statement in here, that gives you the opportunity to say, "Okay, you know, you're done." Am I understanding that correctly?
And limiting it to the three minutes.
But what three minutes? Because there is no three-minute limitation.
At the discretion of the council as a committee chair. That means I can say three minutes and you have 30 seconds left.
Well then, will you pass on to Mr. Wireball that he's not understanding the council rules?
Okay. I will do that.
Thank you.
While we are talking about council rules, I would just like to point out, Bucyrus Codified Ordinance 111.10, titled Permission Required for Leaving Session, says, "No member of council or any city official seated within the council chamber's railing shall be permitted to leave council or committee meetings while in session without permission from the presiding member." This was passed September 1, 2020. We just witnessed one of the council members tonight leave during an open session of that meeting without getting permission from the chair of that meeting, which was the Health and Safety Chair at the time. My question is, who is in charge of enforcing the rules? What is the punishment for when the rules are violated? Mr. Law Director.
I don't know off the top of my head. I'll have to look at it.
I'll let you look at it and get back with me.
Thank you. Anything else? If not, I will adjourn Finance at 6:45 PM.